Village of Lincoln Heights Council meeting is now in session. Today's date is Monday, June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five. The time is now seven-thirty. Roll call.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Councilwoman Nona Kahumumia.
Present.
Councilwoman Karen Hinkston.
Present.
Councilwoman Tanya Key. No response. Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell. No response. Vice Mayor Linda Childs-Jeter.
Uh, present.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Present.
We have five who are present, two who are absent. We do have a quorum.
Thank you. The prayer will be given by Councilwoman Nona Kahumumia.
Heavenly Father, we come before you today with grateful hearts, lifting up the council for the Village of Lincoln Heights, asking you to continue to be with us as we try to govern the village. We're asking you also, merciful Father, to give us the knowledge and the discernment that we need to continue strengthening and providing for services for our community. Lord, guide our decisions so that we may act with integrity, fairness, and compassion. Give us the courage to stand for what is right and the patience to listen to the concerns of the people that we serve. We ask all this in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, the living, liberty, and justice for all.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion to excuse, uh, Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell from this meeting.
Second. Roll call.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
Yes.
Councilwoman Nona Kahumumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hinkston.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs-Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have five eye votes. That motion does pass.
Thank you. Motion ordered for the filing of the journal for the committee of the whole meeting minutes for June ninth, as well as the regular council meeting minutes of June ninth, two thousand and twenty-five, both with any necessary corrections.
Some of...
That was Councilwoman Baber.
Uh, second.
Okay.
It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes?
Yeah, aye, I'm sorry.
All right, okay. Announcement.
Did you get all ayes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Announcement.
I didn't hear it.
Okay. Is there announcements? Uh, Councilwoman Hinkston, any announcements for you?
No.
Okay. All right. Councilwoman Muniya Kah- uh, Kahumumia, sorry?
Um, no.
Okay. All right. And Councilwoman Baber?
Um, no, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. All right. Vice Mayor?
Yes, I have something that just came to me from, uh, the, the Reese team. Alicia Reese, uh, the founder's story, uh, Sister Nay Black Music Walker Fame Documentary. This Saturday coming up, Saturday, June the twenty-eighth, three-thirty P.M., red carpet, photos, meet and greet, four-thirty P.M., movie premiere. Uh, it's gonna be held at the Princeton High School Theater, uh, at, of course, I can't see it. Uh, One Hundred Viking Way. And it's a free event. If you want to attend, then you have to RSVP to five-one-three-two-five-three-five-zero-two-zero. Again, that number is five-one-three-two-five-three-five-zero-two-zero. Will be held this Saturday. Uh, the red carpet piece starts at three-thirty P.M. and the premiere will be at four-thirty Princeton High School. Please attend.
All right, thank you. I don't have any announcements. All right. All right. Uh, we'll go straight into our regular agenda communications, uh, to council from our cloak of council, Lisa Randolph.
Uh, good evening. I do not have any announcements to make.
What about the parade?
Oh, okay. I guess I can continue to do that, right?
Yeah.
Um, I was reminded of one. The Village of Lincoln Heights will have their annual re- annual parade on Saturday, August thirtieth. Um, it will begin at ten A.M. Uh, we are looking for volunteers to help put this together. Uh, we definitely need volunteers up at the station staging area. Excuse me. Um, there are packets of information on the website and Facebook page. You're also welcome to come down here to the village to pick up a packet. And the packet contains basically the waiver as well as an application to, uh, fill out if you would like to participate. We're looking for cheerleaders, bands, uh, music. We've had cars, uh, that participated, but if you know of any group or organization, they can also give me a call. Extension number three. I am Lisa Randolph, clerk of council. Thank you.
Yeah, you can.
Okay.
Oh, okay, I know why, yeah.
Yeah.
You do. We wanted to amend the agenda.
Yeah, just because I know he wants to give that and I don't want him to wait as long.
Uh, Mayor, I'd like to amend the agenda to move Mr. Maven up, uh, from number thirteen to number eight.
He'll, he'll go under, uh, before old business?
Before, uh, before, after, after old business?
He can come before.
Yeah, let's, let's do that.
Okay, all right. Um, I don't have any communications, so...
I made a motion to do the moving.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay.
All right. Uh, it's been moved in second to amend the agenda to add Mr. Maven to speak after communications. What's that?
Roll call.
It could be all in favor, but we could do the roll call.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Councilwoman Nona Kahumumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hinkston.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs-Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have five eye votes. That motion passes.
Okay. All right. And then I, I don't have any communications for, uh, as far as the mayor. Uh, Mr. Desai, is there any communications from you?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Before council tonight, under item nine on the agenda, new business, um, are resolutions twenty-five dash R sixty-one, twenty-five dash R sixty-two, and twenty-five dash R sixty-three. These are all resolutions to proceed with placing various levies on the ballot. Uh, we have discussed these, of course, uh, a number of times over the last several months. Um, R sixty-one is the renewal of the operating levy. R sixty-two is the increase of the operating levy. And then R sixty-three is an increase of the police levy. So, I'm not gonna go through any of the, uh, factual information that was provided by, um, the administration to council for the need, uh, for these, but I do just want to, um, refresh ourselves on where we're at in the process. So, um, if you'll recall, uh, anytime we place a levy, um, or look to place a levy on the ballot, it requires two pieces of legislation. Uh, the first piece of legislation is known as the Resolution of Necessity, where council declares the, uh, need for a levy, a renewal, a replacement, an increase, a new one, whatever it may be. That then, if it is passed by council, uh, goes down to the auditor's office to get what we refer to as a certificate of estimated revenue. And basically, uh, the, uh, Hamilton County Auditor is telling you if you were to get the, uh, voters to pass this, here is the revenue that it would generate. Um, that is, uh, an important process because it often allows the administration to come back and say, okay, well, we don't need that much, or we need more based on the millage that was put in the resolution. Did you wanna make a note for the record regarding this measure?
Uh, sorry. Thank you.
So, um, uh, so that is an important step in the process with the auditor. Um, so we spent a couple few months, um, getting that information from the auditor. And we are now presented with the second piece of the two resolution process, known as the resolution to proceed to place it on the ballot. So, R sixty-one, R sixty-two, and R sixty-three are all resolutions to proceed to place it on the ballot. Um, one of the questions that came up regarding the operating levy, uh, was if it's being renewed, will it be renewed at the old values, the old property values, or would it be renewed at the new property values? And the answer we, we, uh, received from the auditor, which is consistent with my understanding of the statute, is that it would be renewed at the old valuation. So, um, it's really not any kind of an increase. It is simply to maintain that revenue stream that the village has had for the last five years. Uh, I do wanna point out that under the revised code, the reason the village has to revisit this every five years is a operating levy cannot be ongoing. It has to have a set number of years with no more than five years, and then a council has to ask the electors to renew it. So, that's why it is being renewed, or at least it possibly will be placed on the ballot for renewal. Um, R sixty-two is an increase in that operating levy because, uh, again, based on the discussions the administration has had with council, the administration expressed a, a need forecasting revenue and expenditures out that the village would need additional money to continue the operations of the village. R sixty-three is in much the same position. The reason we're not renewing the police levy is that is an ongoing levy. So, once that was passed by the voters, that was passed on an ongoing basis and will just continue, much like the operating levy, to generate the revenue it did at the old values. Um, however, I believe, uh, the administration informed council that, uh, with the increases that are due under the sheriff's contract, there will not be enough money to satisfy those contractual monetary obligations, so there would be a need to increase it. So, R sixty-three, the increase of the police levy, is for that purpose. Um, again, R sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three, all resolutions to proceed with placing it on the ballot. Two important things to note, um, this does not put the levy in place. So, if R sixty-one, R sixty-two, R sixty-three, or any mix of them is indeed passed by council, that does not mean the levies are renewed or increased. It is a voter decision. So, all that does is place it on the November two thousand and twenty-five ballot for the vote, voters to consider. And they either give it the thumbs up, or they give it the thumbs down. Uh, one final thing, uh, by statute, uh, these resolutions cannot be passed by a simple majority of four. It takes five council members to pass the resolution. Also by statute, um, if the rules were suspended to, uh, eliminate the need for three separate readings, there's no need for an emergency clause. By definition, under the statute, it immediately goes into effect. So, if you were wondering why there were no emergency clauses attached to it, that is why. So, I just wanted to take a moment to kind of refresh us where we are, um, in the background. Um, and if anybody has any questions, I'm, I'm happy to answer them to the extent I can.
So, for the readings, uh, Ms. Randolph, we'll just read it. We don't have to ask for by title on them.
Um, no.
Or do you want to reflect that again? Do you wanna do it again, refresh again?
She'll read them by title by default because I believe council got these early last week, so... Uh, but if certainly if anybody wants them read in their entirety, they can make such a motion. And then if it passes, it would be by entirety. But, uh, the vice mayor is correct because council got them in advance, uh, per the calendar. Uh, by default, it's read by title.
So, you also said for the first three, we don't have an emergency clause attached to it?
Correct. Sixty-one, sixty-two, and sixty-three.
Okay.
Mrs. Desai, I just wanna thank you for making that clarification so that residents and us, we know that we're not voting on a levy, we're just voting to put it on a ballot, and that the residents at the end of the day have the choice of whether it pass or fail. So, I thank you for making that plain to the understanding for everyone.
My pleasure.
I have another question. In our Respect the Block, uh, one of the residents asked if this increase would happen twice a year? This is a one-year, uh, like the increase, it happens. Do you have to pay the millage twice a year, or is it just once a year?
Now, so, um, now I don't by any means want to usurp what the auditor might say, but in general, the way taxes work in Ohio, first off, we pay them in arrears. So, in twenty-five, we're paying twenty-four taxes. Um, the way Ohio does it is they break your payment up into two payments. It's one tax, but you just pay it in two installments, if you will. So, the, um, the, uh, increase, for example, is not gonna be an increase that they pay twice per se. It's an increase on the overall tax, which is then divided into two payments.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Desai? Okay. All right.
That's all you got?
Okay. All right. And so that leaves, uh, Mr. Maven?
And I was just gonna ask, could we note for the record, uh, Ms. Mitchell's entrance?
Um, couns- I have Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell marked at arriving at seven-thirty-five P.M.
Mr. Maven, did you need this packet?
I wanted to pass it down.
Yep.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't, I was one short.
Yeah, take this. I had this here for both of us.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's why I had it there.
I don't vote on anything, so...
You need, you need it?
No, ma'am, I just wanted to make sure y'all have it.
We're good then.
Okay.
Again, I'm, I'm Jimmy Maven, James Maven, or...
Have to speak a little louder into the mic, please? Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, right there, right there.
Okay. Um, so basically, um, you know, I think everybody know me pretty much. I've been investing in Lincoln Heights for years. And, um, I had been asking God for a vision to do something other than invest in property for myself. So, I came up with an idea. They did it in Detroit. It's, it was a, a, a crowd equity fund, a, a co-op for the community to own, uh, the grocery store and a strip mall. Um, so, when I saw what they did in Detroit, I said that would be a good opportunity for us. So, I've been doing my research and I've, I've been putting everything together for the, uh, to try and buy Wendy's or either Taco Bell. If we can acquire one of those assets, uh, that's what we're planning on building a grocery store. Um, it's gonna take, in, in my estimate, four thousand people and to invest a thousand dollars apiece. This was m- my design to have each person put a thousand dollars in. They get twelve months because I know it's hard for people to just come up with a thousand dollars. It's hard for me. So, if we do twelve months, that's eighty-three dollars a month. When I did the numbers in Lincoln Heights to look at how much residual income was leaving, they said it'd take twenty-one dollars and forty-nine cents for, to feed a person in Ohio. And I think I spend, uh, all of us spend more than twenty-one dollars to feed ourselves in Ohio. So, when I did it, I did the math on thirty-two hundred people according to the census. That mean it's, uh, twenty-five, a little over twenty-five million dollars a year leaving Lincoln Heights. They go into Kroger's and Woodline, or it's going to Even Deal at the Walmart, or Yellow's down the street, which nobody in Lincoln Heights reap any benefits from, not one sole person. We gave, uh, Wood, uh, uh, Wendy's, uh, uh, I'm, and I might be wrong, I'm not sure, but it was either, uh, ten or anywhere from a five to a fifteen-year tax abatement, uh, to, uh, put the Wendy's there. And, uh, thing, I don't know how many jobs they said would come to the community. Well, it'll be fifty-plus jobs coming to the community if we put this together for our community. And then we'll have ownership. We can decide what we wanna do with the property as opposed to just letting other people come in, access the property, and then once they done, did their business and made their money, they turn around and they bring other people in to release the buildings. And I'm pretty sure everybody look over there and see where our old bank used to be at. Now, it's a mechanic shop. That's the first thing you see when you come to Lincoln Heights. It's, uh, it's horrible. So, my thing of it is, is we start acquiring the land. If we, if we can retain twenty percent of that twenty-five-plus million dollars leaving Lincoln Heights every year, that's five million-plus dollars a year that comes back to the community, that we can now start to look to do other things. Not only that, if we, uh, we, we gonna apply for new development tax credits, which that puts in a position to be able to get a sub-bank in our grocery store. That means with the type of money that should be going through our, our bank and our community, we can start accessing some leverage to say, hey, can, what, what funding can we do for commu- this community as far as homeownership? I think we open up the door for more opportunities. We can do a, a, a partner share, or, or, uh, kinda like a co-op partner share with somebody wanting to open up a restaurant where the community owns part of it, but the person with the initial idea, they, they doing it in Norwood right now. Um, they do a partner share where the, well, actually, it's not the community that owns it. It's just a private owner that owns it, but he does a partner share with people with their own businesses, and he makes fifty percent of whatever they make off the, uh, bottom line. So, what I have to have to make this work is gonna have to be a council in agreement and a community in agreement. And what I come to the agreement, I mean, understand that I'm willing to do is I'm going door-to-door to talk to every single person. I will write down every single address, their email address, their phone numbers. I have all the information that wants to be a part of this. And I do, I just don't believe that one person would not wanna be a part of this. And the way we structure of our crowd equity fund, it makes it affordable for anybody to be able to participate in this. Eighty-three dollars a month, you just have to cut out some pot, some chips, something, but we can make it happen. So, uh, I know a lot of people say four thousand people, uh, tr- trying to get four thousand black people to do anything is impossible. Well, I don't believe it is. Not in today and age we in, I think it's possible, and I believe in it. So, my goal, and I'm not gonna say I'm just, it's gonna be four thousand black people, but my goal is to just do that to try. And I think I can do it if not, you know, it'd be whoever's investing. But we will meet our four, four thousand quota. We will build a grocery store and a strip mall for the community that they will have ownership in. And they will be able to have voting rights to decide what goes on the community. I just need a working council in agreement to even be able to get registered with new development tax credits, and then we're gonna try and go after a tax abatement because we're gonna need it. Difference, if we get a tax abatement, it's for our community. It's not for Wendy's, it's not for Taco Bell, it's for our community. So, everything I'm trying to do from this point forward is to try and help the people in the community, not just the community, but I can fix up a house here and there, but it, that's not helping the people just in the community. If I can make them a part of the business, then it's helping them, and that's what I wanna try and do. So, that's it.
Can you have any questions for Mr. Maven?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
So, Mr. Maven, on, um, the second page, number eight.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, and, and as well as, um, number six, you're saying that the location is Mangum Drive, um, but you're not sure where other than...
Yeah, my goal is, is, my goal is either Wendy's or Taco Bell. My preference is Wendy's first.
And have you, are you, uh, aware that they are trying to move out, sell their building, lease the building?
No, ma'am, I'm, 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 basically what I'm doing is I, 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 I have a real estate agent that's trying to get it, you know, make contact. I'm putting up the first five hundred thousand. And the thing about everything I'm saying is everything is transparent. You'll be able to see everything that's being done. Nobody will be able to do nothing slick. Um, are you familiar with, anybody familiar with a, a crowd equity fund? Well, you, you can just Google it, whatever. What you'll see is, is you pay into a fund, and that money is specifically for the purpose of what it's to be used for. Nobody can access that money, nobody can touch that money. So, what is being done is, is, uh, I'm trying to make everything transparent so everybody in the community won't be able to point fingers and say, well, what's going on with this? What's going on with that? I'm letting everybody know I have to put up the first five hundred thousand plus to be able to acquire the, the building in order to be able to get it, if, if we can get it at that price. But one thing I do know is that I think we can get it because money usually can make people move, and they, they losing money over there.
So, if you don't get Wendy's, what's your second option?
Taco Bell. And if we can't get Taco Bell, I, the, 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 the plan, the, uh, business plan you're looking at, it's, it's a rough plan because that's not the building that we're gonna pick. That's just what I like, thought was nice, but everything has to be voted on.
This is a concept.
Right. I just don't want everybody to say, oh, he's trying to, none of that. Everything has to be voted on that, from the community. Everybody who participates, they, they vote on it. It's not me. Um, so, I, I, I think from that standpoint, I think, you know, with the transparency, I have to take and go after the building in order to be able to even go forward with this. So, that's why I'm saying I'm gonna go ahead and put up the initial money. But everything will be, you know, transparent. You know what I did, I won't do nothing that nobody can look and see for theyself. Everything will be, you know, the numbers will be there, um, you know. That's just where I'm at with it. So, if, if, you know, my goal, like I said, is those two spots. And I don't see why we can't get them because the businesses that were there closed down. And now, well, Wendy's is still open, but Taco Bell closed down. Now, they leasing it to, uh, I'm not sure exactly who is renting it from the company, but you see what it look like over there. You see what, if you go there, you know what it smell like. You go in Wendy's, you know, you, you see, you smell, it, everything is, is, you know, it's, 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 they're not putting any money over there. They just letting it go down, even including where they got the mechanic shop where the bank is. The, the, the people on that is not putting any money in there, they just letting it go down. Well, if we get Wendy's and the money that we generate, we can start taking control of the community again. We can buy the extra Taco Bell out. We can buy that bank over there and then move them out and put something in there, a, a Dairy Queen or something like black-owned Dairy Queen. I mean, it's just the opportunities is here if we start investing back in ourself. And as long as we keep letting other people come in and invest in our own community and then take it and leave, it's never coming back to our community. We have the opportunity now to invest in ourself, and it comes back to our own community.
I have another question, Mayor. So, Mr. Maven, can you explain to us what the, um, Community Land Trust or the permanent cooperative structure is?
So, basically, I don't have the exact language of that. My attorney will be able to do that or explain it to me better. But I know, uh, when I go to meet with the guy, he was, uh, uh, in Detroit, he was telling me you have to put it in a, uh, you can put in a land, you talking about after the five...
Yeah, the exit strategy.
If, if, yeah, the exit strategy is if we have to, we can either take, like, let's say if we, if they don't forget a five or seven-year, uh, new development tax credits, then we have to roll it over until like, we're trying like a two percent loan or something like that, um, kinda what they did in Detroit. And then I think they had to put it in a land trust or something like that. But everything is structured, you know, to benefit the community, you know, or whoever invested in it. It's, it's to benefit the persons that's invested. And the reason why I'm going door-to-door myself to every person because I want Lincoln Heights to have the first opportunity to invest in it.
So, um, a question.
Yes.
So, you, you'll have a board, or?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, you'll have a board, and you haven't gotten to that stage yet?
I have two people so far. Yes, ma'am.
And... So, and this board will be like a community development board, and it would be incorporated, or?
So, I have to do a nonprofit. My nonprofit is Change With Love Foundation. So, I have to do a nonprofit, my nonprofit is Change Your Love Foundation, and I have a board for that. We also have a board for the grocery store, which uh be uh members, you know, it, people who can uh make, you know, judgments and know a little something from our community. To uh for, so, the products that we carry in our grocery store, we, I like them to be black-owned, I'm sure everybody else in the community would too. I like for our meats to be more local than like Kroger's, and they dime and make them look like they good, and they're really not. I think we could change a lot of that, like how they do at Finley Market, uh, how a lot of the products from Cincinnati is right there, so we can access a lot of that stuff with the right board over the grocery store.
So, you're
Yes, ma'am.
How would you get your five and a thousand dollar investment back, or you won't?
Well, that'll be part of, number one, what I'm investing in, because you gonna have, you gotta have different levels of investment, you know. A a thousand-dollar investment's not gonna be able to do it, and then we have, in order to be able to even get the ball rolling, we gonna have to put the five hundred thousand dollars up to act to get the acquisition of the property. So, it you got different shares, which everything will be broke down before anybody invests a dollar, you can see exactly how much you can invest to whatever share you want. I'm doing the same thing, I'll just be investing my money for shares, it won't be anything like, but you, I could buy five thousand shares, I only get one vote.
You only get one vote, but you would own?
You can buy five thousand shares.
Own more than fifty percent of the business?
If I if I bought, I'm not, I I wouldn't be able to do that, just a thirty-three million dollar project, at least. No, I I it would be impossible, but you own fifty percent.
I'm asking.
No, ma'am, I don't, I don't see that.
Explain that, because you're talking about putting that five hundred thousand dollars, a lot of money to for all of us, you know. And uh, just what part are you expecting for that to come back to you, uh, how does your?
Well, I'm a businessman, so.
Investment and money coming back to you, uh, work, yeah.
Well, I don't have the fine numbers yet, exactly how that's gonna work, but, you know, I'm not worried, that's on the backend for me, because you know, you you gotta spend money before you can make it, I mean, it's a lot of paperwork.
I don't have any to spend.
It's a lot of paperwork, it's gotta be put together before you can even attempt this, where lawyers and accountants will be doing this, this can be anywhere from fifteen to fifty thousand dollars even. Get just the paperwork together to do this.
So, question to anyone who has this information on council, probably you, Laverne. Uh, will this have to go through the planning committee and come back to House Revert, you know, come back later?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I would I would think that um you use both um, both vehicles, the economic development committee and eventually um planning. But I I think that we are um a long way off um from that. Um, I think there's additional um information and some um some things Mr. Maybin probably needs to present to us that clarifies, because right now it's a concept.
Yes, ma'am.
So, we we're not clear right now how he's going to get his money back, if he wants to get his money back. I'm not clear if the Lincoln Heights Collective, you said it's a community-led real estate development initiative, but does that become a five oh one, does it become a business, and going to miss um Councilwoman um Mumia's question, in terms of your board?
Right, well, yes, ma'am, I won't have any of that until I get
Okay.
What what, I'm I'm pretty much duplicating a lot of what they did in Detroit, so.
Okay.
Uh, the guy from Detroit is mentoring me, uh, I met him through James Smith. Um, and I guess he has something a little bit to do with it towards the end, when they got through with the project up there. But uh, I go up Thursday, and then I'll be, spend the day with him on Friday. And uh, he's gonna walk me through a lot of stuff, and then he's gonna be my mentor through this whole thing.
He gonna come, you gonna come back with a presentation, or you gonna bring him down to present, and then you gonna make a way for us to go to Detroit to look at it, right? That's how that works, you know, you know, that's how that works, so that we can see it in action, see it visually, and then go see it.
Well, you know what, I will look into seeing what that cost would be. But I will definitely try and make that happen, and especially if I can get him to come, which, you know, that's a good idea. Maybe I can get him to come and uh bring him in town as the, you know, but I would definitely uh, ask everybody to go online and Google the Detroit Crowd uh Fund Program, I mean, the Detroit Co-op Program, Food Program. And I think that you you will see it's it's a it's a lot that you get, you know, but it this is a big project. And like I said, I don't have all the answers, but the number one thing before you even have any answers, is it's something that the community wants, because even just me starting out, you know, it's 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 just money and time that's going in, I need to know that if we have a working council here, because it's the number one thing, if, when you look in the uh uh new development tax credits, they said you made sure you have a working council and a community that's on board. So, before I can even try and do anything, is this something that the community wants from our council? And I've I've been, you know, of course, you know, talking to a lot of people in the communities, and uh, so far, I've not spoken to one person that doesn't want it, so.
I have a question, so um, when when I think about how we have two restaurants, in your concept, um, you have grocery, laundromat, for lease, and I know you just said it's just a concept.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, to switch out one of the restaurants, would you see a a certain type of restaurant placed in these ones as for lease? Because you're looking at taking a restaurant out of a community and them not having one?
That, I mean, that's, till we we vote, the board just vote on stuff, I mean, I don't, I'm just putting stuff out that I know.
Well, I just wondering what you do, did you consider, you know, because that'd be when it, when you think about the residents, how they're convenient to go to the restaurants that are, that we do have, we don't have a lot.
Right.
But when you remove that, what you're gonna replace it with, they're gonna look at something also, not just grocery shopping, but fast food is here to stay, whether we want it or not.
Yes, ma'am.
How would you, would you look at putting um based on, I guess, what the residents want, something in the into those le- for lease spots?
Yeah, I mean, it's it's pretty much, you know, if somebody comes and want to lease a spot, and they would, you know, go to the lea- the leasing agent, whoever we use, and, you know, they would have to go through and make sure they qualify at least a space.
Right, because.
And I think what the mayor is saying, too, is I agree with that, because you are ta- taking away something. Um, if, let's say, if one of those restaurants say, yes, okay, um, we're still sending people out to get their meal. You know what I'm saying, because this, it has become um an integral part. So, I think that um as you um present, what are some of the ideas that can go um into this strip mall? Those things that will also bring additional revenue to the, to the, to the village, um, because some things, and I'm like the laundromat, how many people will that employ, and what will their salaries be? Because the income, earnings income is what we need, you know, so.
Grocery store, fifty-plus people.
But you're gonna always, but see, okay, so, what we what what we look at is, we look at also what the jobs that we already have, what those earning taxes are coming in, and for our residents to be able to, young high schoolers able to go work. Um, even though they may want a grocery store, they may, we don't want them to go over to Woodline and go um purchase from McDonald's, because that's McDonald's Chipotle, maybe a Chipotle can fall itself into one of these leasing spots. Because they have that model over, you know, across the highway and other communities as well.
I I agree with that a hundred percent, but one of the things I I think is a huge benefit too, which they're they're doing in Detroit. You know how they got a, they have those people that, like, you got a kitchen in there, but they got in the grocery store where people can come in and just uh different foods and stuff they make and prepare for them, they teach them how to do different things. You know, the people in the community that might not normally cook, or know how to prepare that certain dish, whereas like, when you go to Sam's, they might have like sample things, we do sample. They got up there, I guess they got a place where you can go in, and then they actually, you know, help people, so we have a a sp- you know, the space, I mean, it's really up to us what we want to do as a community, because, like I said, you know, we put together a board where people know, you know, that they they can work with numbers and 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 business people to try and get the right businesses in here, because I don't know all the businesses, I just know, uh, I think the grocery store in itself will be a lifeline for Lincoln Heights. We won't have to worry about going to get food from other places, it's gonna generate the the, just think about this, just, I mean, just just think about this, it's it's twenty-something million dollars leaving Lincoln Heights and just food every year. Can you imagine if Lincoln Heights, it's gonna be, it's it's four thousand people going to invest, if it's four thousand, you know it ain't four thousand adults in Lincoln Heights, so it's gotta be other people that's gonna invest into the program, well, if it's other people, Forest Park, Woodline, Lachlan, they investing, and you don't think they gonna come to Lincoln Heights and spend their money in their own store that they invested in? And then you got more people coming to Lincoln Heights, more traffic, people coming through, we want black, I mean, homeownership. So, now, people seeing it, they seeing it's a nice community, they don't go about what they done heard in our past, they going on what they see in our future and our present, which is, we had the best d- block party with not one problem. How many other communities you gonna say saying that now? We, we setting the example. If we gonna set the example, let's just, if we setting the trend, let's just keep it going, let's give something back to the community.
We just wanna, you know, because we're looking at what we have now, and how we will be able to um coming off the highway, what's gonna be that attract individuals to, if there is those restaurants aren't there, what's gonna get them to come off that restaurant, uh, come off the highway and go to the grocery store, yes, but what else is gonna be in that spot?
Store.
Because we, when we, when we talk around this table, we looking at the earnings for the village, um.
Well, if there's a, you got three other stores, I guess you could put, you know, it won't be as big as a a as a Wendy's, but you still can put a fast food restaurant there.
Square feet per storefront, so, and and I'm sorry on there, it says twenty thousand square feet, the grocery store is twenty thousand square feet, the building structure is thirty thousand square feet. That gives uh twenty-five hundred square feet for for more spaces, I believe it is.
Okay, so this twenty thousand should be what?
Thirty thousand.
Okay.
Um, so then, if you do a restaurant-type thing, it's gotta be a drive-through, drive-around?
No, it can't be a drive-around.
Yeah, go in, well, that that too would, wouldn't be what we have now. Whereas people prefer to do the the drive-through and go in.
Yes, ma'am.
I think one of the the things. Will the mo- will they um, the individuals that you're gonna be working with, will they be looking at a market study, what's, what the market says for this area?
Yes, ma'am, and 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 I'm I'm just, just gonna say, I've I've been doing numbers, and I've reached out to a bunch of people, and I'm just gonna be honest with you. When I first was, you know, just going through the situation, I posted up on Facebook, so I posted on Facebook, and then I started getting a bunch of people inbox me or whatever. But then, I guess, word started getting around, I've been talking to a few people, I got a few phone calls from other people. Some other people that was like, why are you trying to do this and include the community? And I said, they said that we could give you the money to do this if you wanted to pull this off. And I said I wouldn't take any money from anybody, I would not do this unless it was for the community. And if the community didn't want to do it, then I'm, I understand, but this is something that I wanted to do for our community to help. And if 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 everybody on them board wouldn't, they don't want it, I understand, I will back up. But I'm I'm really wanting this, and I think the community want it, and I think the community needs it.
I don't think that's what they're saying. What we're trying to say is that not saying your idea is not a good idea, but when you take away what's there. Example, my son can walk to Wendy's, and know exactly that that's a restaurant.
Yes, ma'am.
And he can know what to get. When he walked to Kroger's, um my son is only a certain level, so when he walked to Kroger's
Yes, ma'am.
to try to go back there to get something from the restaurant, he may not be able to grasp that concept when he know if he going to Wendy's, if he going to chicken place, he know what they have, he know that he can go in there and order some chicken or hamburger. So, we have young people that are in the neighborhood, that is walking just to get something quick to eat.
Yes, ma'am.
Also, I want to ask you, when you talked about your bo- board, would there be any residents a part of the board that you have?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That's the only way I would do it.
Okay.
If I may, ma'am, um, I think um, we all know that this is um, it's a plan.
Yes, ma'am.
And right now, it's a concept, it it nothing is is in stone. I think that, for me, one of the biggest things that we, you do need to consider is in terms of getting with the Ohio Department of Transportation, because that's gonna be a traffic change. More than likely, you gotta think about the the parking um for the um number of businesses that you're going to have, and perhaps what uh those other uh three may be, I mean, certainly, there is uh some um fast food restaurant or a restaurant that can go in there, but right now, I think that you want to make sure, because I looked at the cost, and I'm just wondering if that um tentative uh cost is, when I look at the construction and build-out?
It's 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 a thirty million dollar.
Traffic and?
It's a thirty million dollar project, those, this is just like you said, you know, just something, so you can, you know, just have something in front of you. I have hard numbers in the next thirty days, which you'll be able to say, and I have uh, which I don't, I didn't really didn't want to try and come up with the concept, I wanted to get the thoughts of the community concept, and then come up with three, and then we just all vote on it, so everything, like I said.
I like the concept, I think it doable, but we know, I mean, we all know it's not gonna happen next year, but.
If we got everything in play, you can't never say never.
I just say with never, I just said, you know, with all that you have to do, you know, in terms of uh everything. So, we we know it's not gonna happen overnight, but um certainly would encourage you to continue to um to pursue it.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Ms. Baber has the last question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, my question is, is kind of a statement as well as a question. I heard uh, just sitting around the table, that they were talking about doing something like this on Lindy. Um, not necessarily the grocery store, but these other um, these other uh things, so have you thought about Lindy?
One, the reason why I didn't want to go with Lindy, I didn't think it was a good idea, because I wanted to try and have some, that uh highway frontage, that's a a marketing tool right there.
Visible.
It's very visible, so the 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 traffic that will be able to see our structure from just a highway alone, you, I mean.
I mean, you can still see the highway on Lindy.
Yes, ma'am, but, well, again, I just thought it would be uh just more feasible, um, you know, just looking at the uh land study or whatever, in my opinion, and I think that would be excellent for something else.
Well, I mean, I only asked because, like I said, they they've been talking around this table about doing something with Lindy. Not not the grocery store, but all these other.
That was my original process thought, I went from there to I went where the 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 Nazis came across the bridge to the right side, and then, once I realized that we needed a a real grocery store, not like the one they did in Avondale, we needed more square footage, and then, that's when God opened my eyes up and just had me, just people talk to me, and just you get information, and then you realize like it's opportunities. And I think right there is an excellent location. The uh, I mean, it's it's a perfect, I mean, we got, I don't know how much land there, but it's perfect, I I know I measured off the a hundred and fifty and two hundred and fifty square feet as far as the structure. So, I think we got, you know, plenty of land, and it'll be ample parking. I just need to, which I didn't do the homework on, is to find out, I know this Lincoln Heights cut the grass in front, out there. So, we're gonna have to access some of that for parking, so.
All right, well, thank you, um, Mr. Maybin, and I'm sure we'll be seeing you again.
Yes, ma'am, it's real soon.
Thank you so much for sharing this with us. Thank you. All right, okay, so we're gonna move on to new business. And um, Ms. Randolph.
Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio, Resolution Number twenty-two-five dash R dash sixty-one. Resolution to proceed with placing renewal of the operating levy passed in twenty-nineteen in the Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio, on the ballot.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Oh, who did the second?
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Hinkston.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Councilwoman Nona Kahoon Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hinkston.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have six I-votes, that motion does pass.
A motion, uh, to receive a passage.
Second.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
Yes.
Councilwoman Nona Kahoon Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hinkston.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have six I-votes, that motion does pass. There's no emergency clause. Okay, Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio. Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash R dash thirty-two. Resolution to proceed with placing increase of the operating pa- I'm sorry, let me start over.
Sixty-two.
Did I say sixty-two?
You said thirty.
I apologize, I'll start over. Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio. Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash R dash six-two, sixty-two. Resolution to proceed with placing increase of the operating levy passed in twenty nineteen in the Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio, on the ballot.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Councilwoman Nona Kahoon Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hinkston.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have five I-votes, one nay, that motion does pass.
Uh, motion, uh, for passage.
Second.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Laverne did the second.
Councilwoman Mitchell's second, okay. Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Councilwoman Nona Kahoon Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hinkston.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have five I-votes, one nay, that motion does pass. Next resolution, Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio. Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash R dash sixty-three. Resolution to proceed with placing increase of the police levy previously passed in the Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio, on the ballot.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Councilwoman Nona Kahoon Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hinkston.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have five I-votes, one nay, that motion passes.
A motion to receive a passage.
Second.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Councilwoman Nona Kahoon Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hinkston.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have five I-votes, one nay, that motion does pass. Village of Lincoln Heights, Ham- Hamilton County, Ohio. Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash R dash sixty-four. Resolution authorizing the finance director to transfer monies from special revenue fund twenty sixty-four to the general fund.
A motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Councilwoman Nona Kahoon Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hinkston.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have six I-votes, that motion does pass.
Motion to receive a passage.
Second.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Councilwoman Nona Kahoon Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hinkston.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have six I-votes, that motion does pass.
Okay, uh, motion to receive, to adopt the emergency clause.
Second.
Okay, Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Councilwoman Nona Kahoon Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hinkston.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have six I-votes, that motion does pass.
Is this the first reading?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead, mister.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just, um, on R sixty-five, this is, uh, something we do every year as council. And it is required by law where, uh, the village comes up with what they refer to as a tax budget for the following year. So this is basically looking towards two thousand twenty-six. And there is a deadline, uh, in our charter for when this has to pass. And so, Mr. Key had, uh, requested this resolution, uh, resolution be put together and presented to council. I believe with the small binder clip on it are all the attachments for the resolution. Schedule A, which is a list of all the funds the village is gonna receive from property taxes. And then he goes through and explains what each one of these, uh, different items are. But this is then going to go down to the, um, Hamilton County Budget Commission for, um, certification, and it will come back to the village, uh, for adoption of the numbers that they, uh, that they come back with. So, uh, again, it's a two-step process, but, uh, we do have a July deadline coming up that the village needs to meet.
And is that it? The deadline is fifteenth, or what's the deadline?
July fifteenth by charter, yeah, it's always somewhere in the middle of the month, I believe by charter, it's July fifteenth.
So we need to pass this to get it downtown.
So, in theory, provided we have a quorum, we would have one meeting in July, if I'm remembering that deadline correctly, of July fifteenth. So it's, it's council's pleasure, but, um, you know, from, uh, from the solicitor's standpoint, there's no, there's nothing really here to debate. This is just numbers that Finance Department has put together to say, here's what our revenue is, here's what our expected expenditures are, and to send it down to the county for certification, so. If there's something that, uh, council's not clear about, then that might be a reason to, uh, not proceed with it tonight. Otherwise, it would seem prudent to go ahead and suspend the rules and get it passed tonight, so it can be sent down.
Mayor, may I respond, make a statement? I spoke with Mr. Key, and he, um, had every intention to attend tonight's meeting to explain the documents. But, um, today was his birthday, and he got a surprise, his kids wanted to take him out to eat, to celebrate his birthday, so he said that he can discuss the documents at the next council meeting, if that's something council wanted to do. I just wanna make sure I said that for the record.
Okay. I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, because so, it says in here that a public hearing was held, we held a public hearing?
Well, I presume you got, you guys did not do that hearing, uh, wasn't there a meeting last week?
I don't know, I mean, I wasn't available, but I don't recall.
Proceed, so the meeting last week was not the public hearing?
It had to be put in the newspaper.
Looking at the second meeting in, um, right, so, so I guess we, uh, do we need to check out our calendars, make sure what that date is?
I, I did send, I'm sorry. I just wanna state that I did e- email to Cincinnati Herald to, um, send out the notice of the hearing, and I don't recall the exact date, but I think it is the, um.
July fourteenth is council's first meeting.
Yes, that's when it is.
July.
Yes. So that's the state, um, to have the, um, the public hearing for the tax budget.
Yeah, I, I believe it was stated in the Finance Committee meeting that it would be, uh, at seven fifteen.
Correct, seven fifteen.
Yes, seven fifteen, so can we just read this by title only, or what do you wanna do with this?
Yeah, you'll have to do a, um, do a first reading, or, I mean, quite frankly, uh, it could even be deferred at this point, um, because, yeah, that, that, um, public hearing is required, uh, by our charter.
So you wanna make a motion to defer it until the second, to the first meeting in July?
Which would be the Economic Development Committee meeting, that's fine, or?
First, uh, council meeting.
Would be the fourteenth.
First council meeting is fourteenth, which is.
That's what they said.
Right, but I believe the, the public hearing is at seven fifteen before that.
Seven fifteen.
Can we, have, do we, if we were to do that, should we amend the, cause it's saying it had a public hearing, we need to amend anything so that we can have a first reading?
I think they already sent the ad, that, I think that's, is that the reason why you wanna defer it?
No, that's not, I mean, we can always amend after a first reading as well.
What is your pleasure?
Well, I'm, I, I'd like to.
And just for the record, it is, it's in four point oh five of the charter. Counsel shall adopt the budget honor before the fifteenth day of July. So, if the meeting goes forward on July fourteenth, then, and it, the rules are suspended and everything goes bright, then council would still adopt it as required by the charter deadline.
So, we would have the public hearing on the fourteenth, and Mr. Key will use the committee of the whole to discuss it, I'm offering the, um, economic development some time there to discuss it, because to wait till that day, that's, I mean, it's a lot.
Your economic.
Could we do it the first Tuesday at, um, at the Respect My Block? Could we do, uh, a public hearing on that day?
That's, that's only gives us a week, how long do you have to advertise for?
I think it's, um, ten to fourteen days before, and we've already put it in for that date.
Yeah, I wouldn't change that, I wouldn't change the notice on the public hearing. You're referring to Mr. Key explaining to council the documents, is that right, Ms. Baber?
I mean, but yeah, as well as doing a public hearing.
Well, I'd leave the public hearing for what we've already noticed it for, uh, which is typically what we do in between committee of the whole and regular council meeting. But, I mean, if your suggestion playing off what Ms. Mitchell said is, if we wanna get the explanation prior to July fourteenth, you know, you can do that prior to July fourteenth, as you were suggesting, have Mr. Key come in and explain that.
Yeah, well, I mean, yeah, that's what I was wanting him to do. Explain it, and, and not necessarily on the same day that we're gonna be voting.
So you wanna do it more than one time, explain it to the people more than once?
Well, he needs to explain it to council if we're gonna, um, vote on it.
So then, Ms. Mitchell, I guess my concern is, it, it can't be a public hearing, cause you've already advertised it, right? But it can be discussed, you know, part of that, I don't know if they can go over all of it, if you're still trying to talk about the levies, I mean, so however long we wanna be here. I just wanna make sure that I understand what's in here, I mean, I pretty much do, but I think, I don't wanna come in here on the fourteenth and get it for the first time.
Sounds like it'd be better to just have it during your economic development.
Right, I mean, I'm, yeah, put some time there, and we can also mention it on that first Tuesday, next Tuesday, to say the tax budget will come, the people can hear it not only at the, at the public hearing, but they also can hear it at the committee of, I mean, at the Economic Development meeting.
Is that, Ms. Baber, does that satisfy what you were suggesting?
Uh, yeah, I just wanna be able to go through it, and I know it's gonna be quick at any rate.
So, council's saying that they will invite Mr. Key to the Economic Development Committee meeting, which is?
The Friday, Friday to Monday.
First.
It's gonna be on the July seventh. If the council meeting is Monday, July fourteenth, and the Monday before that would be July seventh. And that's where you're gonna ask Mr. Key to come and provide an explanation. Whoever obviously is here, but primarily the focus is the council, correct?
Yes.
And that's Monday, July seventh, at the Economic Development Committee. And then council will maintain the public hearing scheduled for Monday, July fourteenth, in between council of the whole and the regular council meeting that's scheduled for seven fifteen, correct?
Correct. And he will be there.
And, and you're gonna ask Mr. Key to be at the public hearing as well to answer any questions.
So, what are we doing with, uh, R sixty-five, are we first reading, or we going to defer it to the next meeting? Next council meeting?
What would y'all like to do?
Can we have the first meet, uh, we can have the first reading and then amend it on the fourteenth?
Yeah, you can.
You can. Everyone hear that? Are y'all comfortable with doing the, uh, the first reading, and if there's any amendments, you can make those changes on the fourteenth?
Okay, I move to read, uh, resolution twenty twenty-five dash R dash sixty-five by title only.
Second.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Councilwoman Nona Kahoon Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hinkston.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have six I-votes, that motion does pass. Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio. Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash R dash sixty-five. Resolution adopting the twenty twenty-six tax budget for the Village of Lincoln Heights for the fiscal year beginning January one, twenty twenty-six, and submitting the same to the auditor of Hamilton County.
Thank you. Okay. She got this, but it's not on the agenda.
The last, the R sixty-six is not on the agenda?
No. It's not on there.
It's R sixty-six.
It's on, it's missing.
It is not on the agenda, that's correct.
Nope, nope, it's not. So. Their deadline is, is this that one that, oh no, this is. Is this that one that, oh no, this is... Yeah, I guess we got it.
Is it too late to amend it to put it on there? It is property for sale.
Yeah, I mean, council wants to go ahead and amend the agenda to add R sixty-six, it can.
Motion to amend the agenda, um, to put Resolution twenty twenty-five dash R dash sixty-six on the agenda.
Second.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
Yes.
Councilwoman Nona Kahoon Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hingston.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kinsey Mumfree.
Yes.
We have six I-votes. That motion to amend the agenda passes.
Okay, are you ready, uh, this is Lisa?
Oh, I'm sorry. Village of...
I, I would, uh, do a motion to read by title.
Well, I was, I just wanted to know if she was ready.
Okay.
Are you ready? Okay. Motion to read, uh, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash R dash sixty-six by title only.
Second.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
Yes.
Councilwoman Nona Kahoon Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hingston.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kinsey Mumfree.
Yes.
We have six I-votes. That motion does pass. Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio. Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash R dash sixty-six. Resolution authorizing the sale of certain real estate, which is nine four five Simmons.
Motion to suspend?
No, well, I was gonna ask a question, but it's okay. Motion, oh, go.
Motion to suspend the rules? Second.
It's been moved in second.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
Yes.
Councilwoman Nona Kahoon Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hingston.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kinsey Mumfree.
Yes.
We have six I-votes. That motion does pass.
Motion to receive a passage?
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. I'm sorry, I couldn't... Okay. Councilwoman Nona Kahoon Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hingston.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kinsey Mumfree.
Yes.
We have six I-votes. That motion does pass.
Motion to adopt the emergency clause?
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
Yes.
Councilwoman Nona Kahoon Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hingston.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kinsey Mumfree.
Yes.
We have six I-votes. Motion passes.
There is no supplemental agenda.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss employment of a public official.
Second.
It's been moved in second, roll call.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
Yes.
Councilwoman Nona Kahoon Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hingston.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kinsey Mumfree.
Yes.
We have six I-votes. That motion does pass.
Mr. DePauw, please come along with us.
The Lincoln Heights Council meeting is now back in session. Today's date is Monday, June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. The time is now nine seventeen. Roll call.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
Present.
Councilwoman Nona Kahoon Mumia.
Present.
Councilwoman Karen Hingston.
Present.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Present.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Present.
Mayor Ruby Kinsey Mumfree.
Present.
We have six who are present, um, one who's absent, we do have a quorum.
All right, is there any miscellaneous business? There's no miscellaneous?
I have something, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to, um, to thank everyone, uh, who showed me and my family support, during my son's passing. Um, I'm very humbled by all the, the love that was shown and all the donations, contributions, the meals that were bought. I want to thank the village, his friends and the organizations that I'm involved in. I really do appreciate all the support. Thank you.
You're welcome, Ms. Mitchell. Just know that we're keeping you and your family in prayer.
Thank you.
Okay. But I have one other thing.
It's okay, go ahead.
So I, I guess I'd like to, to, to offer a motion that, um, uh, be allowed to raise funds for the, um, Shakespeare in the Park. I don't know if that's what we need to do, but, you know, we are on the schedule to do that. And I'd like to be able to, um, um, request sponsorships for that.
So your motion is to, do your motion again, please?
Well, I mean, basically to ask council, I mean, whoever, you know, I can write it, the mayor can write it. I just think that because we are on the schedule, um, to do Shakespeare in the Park, that we, um, make an effort to put the program on.
Do you know the total cost of that?
Well, for them, it's fifteen hundred. So I would say that the cost to raise would be about two thousand.
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell, you're just, uh, looking for sponsorships like for Lincoln Heights Day Festival, correct?
For the Shakespeare in the Park.
But it's for Shakespeare, but the same concept, right?
Yeah, same concept, yeah.
Did you make the motion?
She made the motion.
I second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Can I get a roll call?
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
Yes.
Councilwoman Nona Kahoon Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hingston.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kinsey Mumfree.
Yes.
We have six I-votes. That motion does pass.
Thank you.
You did a second.
Second, it was by Councilwoman Baber?
Mm-hmm, okay.
Oh, okay.
All right, is there any other miscellaneous? Okay, if there's not, we've already done the hearing from the residents, so is there a motion for adjournment?
Uh, motion.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have a good night.